This meeting is called to order. I'm going to beg your indulgence, I always start the meeting by saying, as you are able and willing, please rise for the pledge. I am not going to rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you all for coming. It's been a long time since we had a packed house at a board meeting, so appreciate your attendance. We start as we always do with our public comment period, and we do have two folks who have signed up to deliver public comment. I'll just do it in order of signups, so Mr. Cable, you're up first.
For the past decade, a movement has been sweeping across society, one that claims to be about love, acceptance, and inclusivity. But beneath the surface, transgender ideology is built on contradictions that are not only confusing, they're deeply harmful, especially to children. Books like the one that was read to four-year-olds at Elliott Elementary School, Molly's Tuxedo, may seem innocent at first glance, a story about a little girl who feels more comfortable in a suit than a dress. But these stories often plant the first seed of a much bigger message, that discomfort with your body could mean you're in the wrong body entirely. Every child will feel uncomfortable in their own body at some point, it's part of growing up. But today's culture encourages boys and girls to question their very identity at the earliest stages of development. What begins as a simple preference for clothes or toys is being used as justification to set kids on a medical path with life-altering consequences. This topic is gaining momentum as more and more investigations expose how schools are hiding information from parents, enabling or even encouraging children to adopt new identities without parental knowledge or consent. This was brought to light for our district when an article by Parents Defending Education was published on February 26th. Our district's transgender policy states, quote, "In the case of a student who has not yet informed their parents or guardians, the administrator should first discuss parent guardian involvement with the student to avoid inadvertently putting the student at risk by contacting their parents or guardians. The student will be notified by the administrator prior to contacting their parents or guardians." It is a scandal to keep secrets from a child's parents. No adult should have a secret with my child. It is immoral, creepy groomer behavior, and it is especially perverse in a context where another district here in our own state, MSAD 11, is trying to install a school-based medical clinic to offer medical services to children in school without parents' knowledge or consent. It makes me sad that I and countless other parents are becoming increasingly uncomfortable sending our kids to public school because of these policies and ideologies. Every boy and girl deserves the freedom to explore who they are without being led down a path of irreversible medical intervention. We need to protect children's innocence, not push drugs and surgery on them. It's clear to me that most people who support trans-identifying boys and girls are doing what they believe is best. They believe they are being tolerant and compassionate. I would ask, but is it true? There are too many self-contradicting claims, which is how you know that it is an ideology and not science. A few examples would be, genitals don't determine gender, but removing them affirms one's gender. Gender stereotypes are bad and wrong, but when a child doesn't conform to them, they should transition. The gender of the person you're attracted to is hardwired at birth, but your own gender can be fluid throughout your life. To those who think this is bigoted or transphobic, look inward and ask yourself, what if I'm wrong? What if I'm supporting the sterilization and mutilation of children in the name of tolerance? What if I'm dismissing real evidence because the medical and pharmaceutical industries are pushing an agenda to make money by creating lifelong patients? Does any of this actually make sense, or am I too afraid to find out? It's time to speak the truth. With love, compassion, and unwavering courage, we need to protect our children. Will you revise this district's transgender policy to mandate informing parents or guardians, regardless of the child's feelings?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And our second speaker, I can't quite make out the last name, sorry.
Haley Gray.
Sorry, give me a second, that's...
Dinner's done.
Now I have to figure out how to stop this.
Well, I got the window.
Sorry, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Haley Gray. Should I connect this now? Never mind. Hi, I'm Haley Gray, Elwin-Southburg. I am a Marshwood graduate, I have three kids that go to Marshwood, and I'm very proud of our district and the inclusivity that we have. I just want to make a statement about that. Schooling is not just about letters and numbers, it's about community, and by definition, community is about inclusion, not exclusion. We often talk about hunger as a barrier for learning, and it is, it's the number-one barrier. However, fear of exclusion and made-to-feel-other of children is just as powerful of a deterrent. If a child is made to feel other, or made to feel that they are wrong in some way, unfortunately, that means that they're not going to want to go to school, not going to want to learn things. So it's really important to me. I want to encourage people in this district to continue to support inclusion for all of our students. There has always been something that people rally or protest against because of its otherness, and even call it harmful. Specifically, when it comes to gender, when it is a subject we don't understand, it's easy to do. But we are quick to select what's socially acceptable when it benefits us. My grandparents, my grandmother, was chastised for wearing pants, but suddenly, it was not a problem when everyone went to World War II and she had to work on airplanes. Suddenly, it was fine, and there was no gender concern for her because she was serving her country. In my generation, it became somehow shocking when people shaved their heads. They called it butch, they called it not gender-conforming to what it was in the 90s. Well, you're a girl, you can't do that. But obviously, it's okay if someone has cancer, no one questions it then. No one questions someone's identity or gender when they don't have hair on their head. But why is it so easy to assume and easy to start rallying against something that we don't understand? My point being, that these kids need to be who they are in safe places in their community, and their community is in our schools. I really appreciate that our district is inclusive. It's not about who they are becoming later in life, it's about who they are in that moment, in that classroom, and feeling safe to be heard and seen. I just want to quote one last thing from Maya Angelou, who's one of my favorites. "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Our kids will walk away from these experiences that are transforming how they do critical thinking, how they do problem-solving in their lives, and if they're made to feel other, or unwanted, or somehow different, that can harm them in that process. So I just want to thank our district for doing that, I really appreciate it.
That concludes our public comment period, and moves us into the report of the secretary. I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, February 12th.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, February 12th, 2025.
I'll second, Lisa.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
It looks good.
Sondra, yours. All in favor?
It's rural.
Those are approved, thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, February 25th?
I move to approve the minutes of the special agenda meeting of Tuesday, February 25th, 2025.
Second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. Comments or questions? Also, well done. Thank you. All in favor? It's rural. That concludes the report of the secretary. Brings us to the report of the chair. I have two items to report on. The first was the town officials meeting that we held on 3/12 with the officials from our two towns. Budget, of course, was a big topic of conversation in all three cases. Mr. Carley talked about where we are in our budget process, more on that later this evening, of course. The Elliott and Southburg folks both talked about where they stand with their budgets. They gave us updates on things like, there's blasting that's going to be going on on 2/36, and it doesn't appear to be impacting the bus route, so that's good. They're looking at health insurance options. In South Bruick, they talked about the $6 million bond for the town hall renovation. There's talk of potentially bringing ambulance services back in-house, that was interesting. Yeah, I think, complete, Rhea Val is almost complete in South Bruick. I think that's pretty much it. Did I miss anything important to add? No. Okay, that's good. So, as always, it's good to talk with the folks from the towns, and to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of how things are going. Secondly, we did have a Maine School Boards Association meeting this past Saturday that I attended remotely. The highlight of the meeting was that Megan Walter, who is the Assistant Director of something or other at the Department of Education, gave us an update on the transition of CDS into the schools. And of course, we are a Tier One school, so we're already very well familiar with that. And the other thing that's of note is that the Maine School Management Association is in the process of searching for an executive director. Our current executive director, Steve Bailey, has announced that he's retiring in June, so, yeah, it's kind of a loss for us.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report, and brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Austin, thank you very much. I'm going to start with the budget presentation, if that's okay? Please. I just want to start with just the timeline, big picture. Tonight is my presentation of the budget that we've been working as an administrative team on for the last six months. After this presentation, we'll provide you with your binders, then the budget becomes yours.
Your mic, right?
Am I on, Ryan?
Okay, sorry.
Yes, yep.
Just to make sure you're in my...
The budget will become yours. We will have two meetings in April, and then we'll have a third meeting on April 30th, and that would be the point at which the board would then present the budget that would go to referendum. We had to move that back to the beginning of April just to be able to help the towns meet the legal requirements for timelines for the elections, so that's why that got moved. So, let's start. It is rather lengthy, and I apologize ahead of time. So I think, when you build a budget, I think we need to start looking at what the student experience needs to be. So, one of the things we talk about is the variables, is the class size. So we have set class sizes, we've done research on that, we look at the impact of that as we build the budget, that's one of the key factors that we look at. Data-driven decisions, we look at student data to lead us in what we need to do, where we need to improve. That's something that we make a really strong effort to do, and so that really has to impact how we make decisions. Early learning and intervention, and so we put a lot of time into creating intervention systems. I think one of the great things with the CDS program, which is a three- and four-year-old special education program, is it gets those students services sooner. And so this is an opportunity for our students to be able to recover those skills. Research would say that if students can close those gaps by their second-grade year, they'll be better in the long term with their education. Excellence in teaching, making sure that we're observing and analyzing teaching, working with teachers to always improve and approve as administrators. Making sure we have adequate classroom supplies, do teachers have what they need? The boards, one of their key ideas is the capsule experiences, what are those landmark experiences the students have throughout our district? For example, one of those may be the hike through history, which happens with our third graders. Could also be sure to pick 'em notch, two examples. So, the main learning results guides our work. The State of Maine sets our standards and says, this is what students need to know and be able to do by the time they graduate. And so really, we work to meet those results. Making sure we have student voice and belonging, one of the things that I think we really want to become better at, and I am so pleased that so many people hear tonight because this is really important for people to hear this, is student voice. And sometimes, you know, we are good talkers, we're not necessarily the best listeners. And so we want to be able to listen to students and have students inform us in what they need, what they want, and be able to work with that in an appropriate manner. So when we talk about the student experience, that encapsulates it. So let's dive into the budget a little bit. So we always talk about what's happened in the prior years, to frame our work. This is our strategic plan. We have the different parts, you know, positive relationships, character, student voice, equity and support, excellence in learning, safety. We have community, students, and staff, and then we have human resources, time resources, and financial resources. So we'll go through each one of those. Safety. Implementation of Navigate 360, which includes building, mapping, and digital photography of all of our schools. Navigate 360 is a school safety program that the district uses to ensure that we have safe schools for our students. We also work with the Elliott-Southburg Police Department and Fire Departments in that area. You may have noticed on the way in, but we've improved the visitor entrance at Marshwood High School. We use the Alice program, and so things that we don't ever like to talk about, what we must be prepared for, is we have a violent critical incident response program, that's where Alice comes in. We implemented ongoing collaboration between the Elliott-Southburg Police Departments and Fire Departments. Implemented the main state regulations regarding distance drinking water in all buildings, that's a changing factor. And then we secured a $0.5 million grant through the Department of Justice to upgrade added security cameras in all of our buildings. Positive relationships. School counseling has been prioritized to revamp across all grade levels. Addition of a new student services hub at Marshwood High School, so we took a part of the building, put all of our counselors together, so it's more accessible to students, so they can go in and see their counselors whenever they need to. Prioritized student advisory, responsive classrooms across the district. We emphasize the hallmark experiences, which we just talked about. We trained our building leaders in trauma-informed leadership, you know, dealing with ACEs and how to support students or staff. Ongoing mental health first aid. Created a systematic approach to monitoring and supporting student attendance, and implementation of the BAR program in grades 6 through 9. A BAR program is really an intervention program at the middle school and now with our ninth-grade Student voice. Just start opportunities to let students voice guide our decision-making. Actively seeking student voice in school board policy committee meetings, hiring administrators and coaches, seeking opportunities for student government to partner with our staff and administration to improve building culture, utilizing peer mentoring to all grade levels, soliciting student feedback with programs and studies at Marshwood High School. We have the main integrated youth health survey that our students take, the MMS peer modeling program, and a conflict resolution training. We have performed allied arts surveys at Marshwood Middle School to ensure students have choice, so they can follow their pursuits, their areas of interest. And then we have continued support for the enhancement of the Maine Attorney General's Civil Rights Team project. Accomplishments with regards to excellence in learning. Added a project adventure course at Marshwood High School, Marshwood Great Works School. We've added an adaptive physical education program in all of our buildings. Partnered with the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard to provide real STEM experiences for our students. We implemented a co-teaching model in the area of special education to support students in grades 4 through 8. Increased capacity to use data-driven extraction as we transition to the NWA State Assessment System. Expanded our career exploration from grades 12 through K to 12. Removed systemic barriers that may have limited students' educational opportunities. An example of this is we just talked about the changes in the main state law, where students now can go to our Stanford Technical Regional Vocational Center in Sanford and be able to get courses there that will count towards their graduation requirements here at Marshwood to take care of those core requirements. So we don't want course selection to be a barrier for students to be able to, for instance, be in the welding program. You know, we enhanced the district health curriculum and ongoing professional development with all administrators to ensure excellent instruction in the classroom. Accomplishments with regards to equity and support. Ongoing professional development to ensure all MSAD 35 community feels seen, valued, and heard as part of our schools. Implementation and evolution of multi-tier systems of support. Partnered with the Count Me In Initiative, which is around, and created attendance ambassadors, which has helped student attendance across all our buildings. Created real-time math intervention at pre-K through grade 5. Increased real-time reading intervention pre-K through grade 8, and adding the middle school was a big change for us, to be able to move it back in that direction, which is fantastic. Added math interventionist pre-K through grade 8. So that allows our students to be able to get the additional support that may need to be successful to meet those main learning results. Created a three- and four-year-old early intervention program for special needs students. This is 100% Maine state-funded. This used to be, as I said, the CDS program, and so, you know, the state asked who would be interested, we became one of the first Tier One schools to be involved with that, so this is 100% funded by the state, but we have a voice now in how that's created. And this has created opportunities for our schools, and it also has been a positive impact on our budget, and I'll share that later in the presentation. We included inclusive bias training in our hiring process. Utilized the Hock Buddies Program to allow older students to support our younger students through mentoring. Implemented a new career model, excuse me, a career center model at Marshwood High School to ensure pathways for all students after graduation. So we really wanted to focus on what's that end goal for all students, and then build backwards from there, and how do you achieve that goal? And you're in the new career center now. So where are we right now? Our current enrollment is 2,132 students, with a total budget of $37,831,622. What are our challenges? And forgive me, there's a lot of information here, so... So we want to ensure that all students have the opportunity and support necessary to learn the skills and knowledge in the main learning standards. The district is working to address student achievement needs for our special education, economically disadvantaged subgroups of students, and so if you look at our subgroups of students, those are two areas where we need to improve. And so really working on, again, using that data to be able to determine how do we help students best. And we are in the process of reviewing the science curriculum to better align with the main learning results in the main science assessment. We are in the midst of that process currently. Anxiety and mental health concerns continue to impact MSAD 35 community and across the country. Our mission is for all members of the school community to feel safe and supported, so students are able to reach their full potentials, helping individuals, citizens, and lifelong learners. This is difficult, because to be able to get mental health resources in the community is very, very difficult at this point in time. Staffing issues. Recruiting and maintaining highly qualified bus drivers and educational technicians remains a particularly big challenge. So we have some solutions to that, that we'll present a little bit later in the budget, but that certainly has been a barrier, and we're no different than many schools across the country with that. Ever-changing state of expectations with regards to management of staff leave. And so the addition of earned paid leave, COVID leave, main paid family leave, has presented unique challenges in relation to budget and filling out positions. The addition of new state-required main paid family leave withholdings as of January 1st resulted in an additional $120,000 paid by the district, with $120,000 match paid by staff. And so that is not necessarily something that we had planned for, and so this is one of those unfunded mandates that the district has to pay for, and the staff has to pay for, by half a percent for each staff member. And that's not something we have a choice in, that's the law. Central School was celebrated its 100th birthday later this spring. The average age of our buildings is 56 years old, and so, you know, we've really tried to put money into our facilities to be able to maximize the usage of our buildings, but obviously, the, you know, century mark for a building is a pretty big deal, and so, the new high school now is going on 26 years old. The district manages five campuses, three properties in South Bruick, and two properties in Elliott, and a lease transportation facility in Bruick. These campuses encompass approximately 124 acres, all maintained by the district. On these five campuses, the district operates six buildings totaling almost 500,000 square feet. The overall appraised value of these facilities is approximately $122 million as of March of this year. And the overboard discharge, this is the sewer system at Marshwood Middle School, is an issue on the horizon we need to keep our eyes on. The economic climate. There's a large amount of uncertainty about future federal funding in the State of Maine. Currently, MSAD 35 receives about $867,000 in federal funds, which is impacting, which will be, may be impacted for the 2025-2026 school year. The Maine DOE is currently in the midst of an OCR, which is an Office of Civil Rights Investigation with the federal government regarding Title IX. The outcome of this investigation may result in loss of federal funding. We don't know, but that's ongoing right now. Fiscal responsibility. MSAD 35 is fortunate to have both communities pass our budget at right around 70% approval rate. With that being said, the district constantly works to find additional revenue to reduce costs to minimize the impact of the district budget on our taxpayers. A financial variable the district cannot control, and I put this in here because people don't understand this, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. In 2007, the communities of Southburg and Elliott voted to cost share, excuse me, to change the cost share calculation for the MSAD 35 school district. So that was a public referendum, voted on by both communities. Historically, taxes are calculated 100% based on a municipal valuation for each community. Therefore, Elliott paid more than Southburg due to the higher overall property value. Regardless of population, it was property value-driven 100%. In 2007, both communities formed three-member committees to discuss the funding issue. Elliott felt Southburg should be paying more, as Elliott sent fewer students to Southburg. The community agreed to formulate a ballot question, a referendum vote passed by 164 votes. The new agreement to continue, excuse me, agreed to continue to have required contribution be 100% based on municipal valuation, but also split the additional local contribution 50% based on enrollment and 50% based on valuation. So this changed that formula. And it depends on the year, that formula impacts the communities differently each year. So this was the vote. Elliott, you know, passed by about 79%, Southburg failed by about 74%, but a total of 164 votes, difference, about 3% difference. The three- and four-year-old early education, special education programming, a three- and four-year-old program was previously funded by the local budget. We accounted for these positions and revenue through our CDS locally. We've had a position, a program at Elliott Elementary School for quite some time. Beginning of the 2024-25 school year, the district created a separate fund to account for this program. Wages and revenues will be moved from the local budget to account for this in the 2025-2026. So we were able to take some of the costs from those programs, create a separate budget that's 100% funded by the state. So this three- and four-year-old program will be acquired by the state beginning July of 2020. So this isn't an option, this is going to happen regardless across the State of Maine. Because the state wanted to help in building the program, how to determine costs would be allocated, you know, my concern has always been, you know, the state says they're going to fund 100% of that, but eventually, the question... to fund 100% of that, but eventually the question is going to be 100% of what? And so, you know, we wanted to be part of that conversation. The district took the opportunity for 100%, state-funded program for the benefit of the district students at no additional cost to district taxpayers. To give you an idea, what numbers are we talking about? When we started off that program, it was about 34 students, district-wide approximately. One of the challenges with this program has been kids aging when they turn three to be able to access that program, which is a little bit different for schools because schools typically have that October 1st birth date, and that kind of triggers who goes to school. So we've had kids aging into the program, so right now we're about 73 students that are involved in this program. How we build the budget? So we use a zero-based budgeting model. Every year we start with zero to build the budget based on the student need. Examples of our zero-based budget practice. So this is the projected staffing and projected enrollment for the 2025, 2026 school year. So if you look at the enrollment, the dots are going to be your staffing levels, and you'll see, for instance, at Elliott Elementary School, we expect that to be down by about two students. Central School is going to be up by about 22 students. Great Works School is going to be, you know, off by a student. And so you'll see at Elliott that we'll be recommending a reduction in staff because of the student needs in that building, but we'll also have to add an additional staff member at Central School because the essential numbers are growing. And we'll talk about how do we determine those numbers in a second. So these are the projected enrollments by grade levels for next year. This number is forever the hardest number to judge, which is the pre-K number. You know, you really just try to go for a three-year trend to try to figure out what has the trend been. I will say this now, I am concerned about the numbers at Elliott Elementary School. We are down a little bit this year from where we have been in the past. You know, we're, you know, we're, again, we're going to fall under the three-year average to be able to manage that, but again, that's really something we just have to guess around. So Elliott Elementary School, you can see, you know, 52 students, you know, pre-K, kindergarten 57, and so on. Marshwood Great Works School, we have four, you know, fourth grade is 157 students, fifth grade is 133 students. So now we take these numbers and we apply them to the class size policy. So to start off with pre-K, we have no gray area with that. Just to remind everybody, pre-K is very clear. You can have eight or less students with one teacher by state law, or you can have 16 or less students with two, with an educational technician and a teacher. So that, there's no variables with that for us. If we, for instance, if we find out that we have 17 students, we would be forced to open another section by state law, which is really tricky. Kindergarten is 14 to 18 students, and so if we were to go back and look at our kindergarten numbers, we would say 57 students, and then we would look at the class size policy, then we would determine how many students we need. The way our class size policy works is that from kindergarten to grade one, it's 14 to 18. As superintendent, I have variability on one to either side. So if it's 13 students, I can still run a class with 13 students, or for a situation where it's a little bit larger, if we had 19 students, we could still run the class. Anything above or below that would require coming to the board for board approval for that. As you can see, grade two to grade five, those class sizes get a little bit bigger from 18 to 22. Grade six is, excuse me, through grade eight is 18 to 25. And then grade nine through 12 is 15 to 25. I say this often, but I just, it's important to talk about it again. In some respects, it's really unfair for the elementary schools because you can just look at those numbers really quickly and say, we have X number of first graders, there's X number of students allowed per class, we can figure out how many teachers we need. At Marshwood High School, it's very, very different because it becomes, you know, what classes do we offer? How many sections do we offer? Do we offer AP classes? Do we not offer AP classes? Do we offer electives? It becomes a little bit trickier. And so we want to make sure that we find this number based on our student needs. And so right now, we're going through the course enrollment process, so students are filling out, you know, their request for next year, and then we'll start to work with those numbers to be able to find out where things fall. And there's one section or one topic in particular I want to be able to address later in the, in the presentation around that. How do we come up with the individual school service and supply budgets? So what we do is we create a dollar amount. We say at our elementary schools, they get $235 per student, middle school is $240 per student, high school is $285 per student, high school vocational students is $143 per student. So we have those students who attend the SRTC in Sanford, they may go the half of a day, so we don't give a full allotment for the full day for that child. We do half of a day because half of their day will be at Sanford or Dover. So if you look at Elliott Elementary School, you take the 283 students, multiplying it by the $235 per student, and you come up with the supply account that the principals are then given to work with their staff. So that's where that number comes from. Major budget drivers? So overall increase decreases in existing costs and revenues? So salaries, insurance, and payroll taxes? That's an increase of about $530,000. It includes an additional $70,000 for the new main, excuse me, main paid family leave initiative. I'm sorry, I get that in the federal, earned paid leave confused sometimes. So the main paid family initiative. Health insurance is a variable right now. We're really good at forecasting what that looks like. And so what they do is they create a loss ratio, and so what that means is that the insurance company says you put X number of dollars into the pot, you spent X amount, and based on that ratio, did you cost the, you know, the trust money, or did you save the trust money, or was it fairly equal? Would depend on what our rates look like for next year. Our rates look really good when you look at just our rates. Unfortunately, I received a letter two weeks ago from the Benefits Trust saying that the money that they used last year to fund health benefits is going to be reduced, so it's really hard now to tell what our number is going to be. So we put a dollar amount in there at seven and a half percent increase, and that was based on the number that they said of the money that they were short. So just wondering where that number came from. We should have that variable hopefully within the next three to four weeks, certainly by the 30th of April, I would hope. So if we go back over our, you know, our loss ratios, and so this 92% says that we put, for every dollar we put in, 92, 92 cents or 92.4 cents was spent of that dollar. There's an administrative cost to run the program, and that resulted in a 5.8% increase. 2020 calendar year, you can see for every dollar, we spent 75 cents, so there was money left there, so we had no increase. Next year, no increase, no increase. Last year, we spent 97 cents on every dollar, there was a 5.6% increase. This year, we are at 74.5, so there's a significant increase. So if you fall back to the 2021 calendar year, logically, it would make sense that we would be at a zero. I just can't take the variable in that they're adding to right now about the money that they put in, that that's a variable that they can control. That was unsettling to get that email. That's a lot of money for us. So right now, and this may get a little bit confusing, so forgive me. Right now, our CDS programming that we run is done through our local budget. And so we have a program that's run at Elliott, we have a number of staff people, there's a number of services that are taking care of. All that money was within our local budget. Well, when we did the three- and four-year-old program, all of that money goes out of the local budget and created its own separate budget, which is a good thing. But in order to pay this, there's going to be a reduction of $410,000 of revenue because we had to have that equal off. And so there is an impact here. It's not a huge issue, but it is a factor that we have to talk about. And so we're trying to use this as leverage to be able to minimize the impact on taxes. And John, how do you do that with a three- and four-year-old program? Like for me, from a logical standpoint, if we have Central School that typically has, let's just say, for easy math, 400 students, and Dr. De'Aaron is the principal of that building, and she's responsible for 400 students. Let's just say hypothetically that now she has 440 students because of the 40 new CDS students that are attending that building. And so what we have done is to say, okay, CDS is going to pay X percent, in this case 10% of Dr. De'Aaron's salary. We'll take that out of our local budget, and we'll pass that on to CDS. Someone has to be the administrator in charge of that. And so those are ways that we're trying to use the CDS money to be able to take care of our local budget as well, but at the same time, the straight face test is someone has to be responsible for those 40 students. So we've done that in a number of different ways. So district moved $437,000 of wages from previously reported in the general fund to a newly established CDS fund, which is 100% funded. So this is the fund that we moved, so it's $437,000. Rollinsford, we renegotiated our contract with Rollinsford. And so there, the way the building, the building had worked previously is that they were always a year behind us, and so we made sure that we put an escalator on that every year to ensure that the district was getting the money that it was owed for that year. And we also recalculated how the co-curricular activities was budgeted. So currently, prior to that, we took the entire cost of co-curriculars, divided by the number of students in the district, and created a cost per student, and used that to be able to determine what Rollinsford would pay. But the reality is, is that the vast majority of our co-curricular activities happened at the middle school and high school, and so we changed the formula, pulled that money out, and so it increased, almost doubled the amount of the co-curricular monies that we recruited from Rollinsford. District goals? Addition of about $385,000, excuse me, $58,000. So district goals based on the strategic plan. Students have their reason for our work, their voice, input, and active engagement is vital to our continued improvement, their success is how we measure our success. Go back to the strategic plan visual. So when we look at our data, one of the areas that we need to improve is our science at Marshwood Great Works School. And so the way that I'm recommending that we do that is we create a part-time STEM position at Marshwood Great Works School where we would have students receive additional science support once a week for about 40 lessons or so. Cost of that is about $45,000. We talked about this, there's going to be increase of one full-time teacher, FTE, at Central School, and this is due to the enrollment numbers. Cost of that is about $80,000. Reading support at Marshwood Middle School, and we're going to try to reconfigure the librarian position at Marshwood Middle School. One of the things with the bar program, as wonderful as it has been, that has cost us some intervention, because that person is the bar person and the interventionist, and so we've lost some intervention time, and so we're trying to find another way to get some more intervention, particularly for our sixth graders, where it'd be a pull-up program where we can have 12 to 16 students every class of those kids who struggle with reading the most. Kids have to be able to read, and kids have to be able to do math. That's to cost about $7,000. Elliott Elementary School, there'll be a reduction of one staffing position, which is about $105,000. And so people might ask, why is $80,000 here? Why is $105,000 here? Here's a speculative number, we don't know who we're going to hire. That could be, you know, someone who could walk in, it could be right out of college, bachelor's step one, and it could cost $50,000, or it could be someone who's at the top of the scale who could be more. But in this situation, when we have someone leave, we know the exact dollar amount because that's what we have in the budget. So just, if there's a difference there, that's why there's a difference. Science at Marshwood High School, I had this last year as a reduction. And when we look at our class sizes in science, they're really small, and they're below the class size policy. And so what I've done is I've said, you know, my recommendation would be to reduce that from a full-time position to a part-time position, have two classes available to be taught, but let's go through the course enrollment process to see what those class sizes look like and what student interest is. One of the factors that's a little bit difficult, or has changed things for us, is that we have about 83 students accessing some type of technical or vocational education outside of this building for part of their day. And so that does, you know, that impacts electives that kids may be able to take in other areas. So that's the savings of about $45,000. Tonight, we, the board has before you a motion to be able to approve the addition of the special education services for SAU 104, where SCAR Rooney would become the director on a cost basis for us. This is an opportunity for us to gain revenue where we were able to help Rollinsford, be able to help our students, and we're also able to help our local budget. So again, why would we do these things? Why do we get into these agreements? It has to be mutually beneficial, it has to benefit both communities. Part of that benefit is that it's going to create some financial flexibility for our local budget. Cost for that position is about $65,000, but it's going to be offset by the CDS and the Rollinsford revenue. So what do you mean, John? Part of this position will be in our local budget, part of that position will be in the CDS budget. That's how, when we say funded by those two sources. Additional costs for the vocational placements, there's about $30,000, and so there is a slight cost increase at both schools when they attend. Last year, we reduced this position to a 0.8 position, and we really wanted to take some time to create some opportunities for students. The numbers in our chorus, in particular, in our music program, weren't requiring the additional time. Now what we've done is we're trying to create a more of a theater, an acting program to be able to create some better electives that kids maybe have more interest in, and that's why we're putting in the extra 0.2, so that would be, that person would be there the extra day a week. Cost of that is about $12,000. We're at the tail end of the COPS grant, so years ago, we had the COPS grant where we were 50-50 with the federal government, we shared it with Elliott. It got a little bit funky because of COVID, and it kind of pushed things off a little bit, but we are now at the end of that grant, we're going to have to put about $20,000 in to be able to offset the cost of that, having the SRO at Marshwood Middle School. We had used the Google, excuse me, COVID funds to be able to pay for our Google suite, and that's the district use of technology, and so that's something that we have to pay for, it's about $20,000 cost for that. Rather than hiring a network administrator, we made the decision to go with an outside company. That's a $24,000 increase with that. The first year, that's a staged up thing, we are still saving money from what we would have been paying if we would have had a network administrator, but it is going to amp up over the next few years. Our staff laptops are at the end of their useful life, and so we were able to secure a 0% financing opportunity through Apple, so we would do a four-year lease program to buy all of our staff, excuse me, most of our staff new laptops. That's cost about $50,000. The athletic trainer cost, this was something that we used to be able to get for free, and the idea was that if we had students that needed athletic support, they would be able to go then to, you know, certain clinic or what have you. And that's gone now, and so we have to pay a certain fee for that now. It's about $20,000 increase, I believe it's $35,000 next year. So there's an additional $20,000 cost in that. We are offsetting some of this cost by revenue, and so how would we do that in athletics? You might ask. For example, this past year, our wrestling program was a co-op with Kidery and Marshwood. And so what happens is, is we create a total cost for what it costs to run our wrestling program. If 38.4% of the kids are from Kidery, we bill Kidery 38.4% of the cost of the athletics that then would be used to be able to offset the cost for we be able to run that program. Many of the athletic events require an athletic trainer to be onsite. That's just, that's not a variable that we can control. Facilities projects, you know, we have to be able to continue to put money in our facilities program. One of the areas that you probably may have noticed, but is the lower parking lot at the high school. We've tried to do our best to be able to maintain that, but we've got to replace that now. We did a cost analysis, and it cost us about $30,000 to $35,000 to do the crack replacement on that. That would buy us another year, or we can do it, the whole thing for about $90,000. And so the smart money is to do the $90,000 now, not spend 30, and then in another year, it's going to be $105,000. And so just take care of it now, so that's where that money's coming from. Cleaning supplies are just more expensive now, there's no way around that. The state used to fund our routing program for transportation, they no longer are doing that, and so we have to have our own routing program, so that's about a $45,000 a year So I talked about bus drivers, and bus drivers being kind of a constant issue for us, and so what do you do? And so we did some research, and we found, they call it the Minitor, which is a funny name, but whatever. It's a 14-passenger mini-bus/van, and so why is that important? Because that, if it's under 15 passengers, it does not require a CDL. And so for a driver to get a CDL, that's typically a three-to-five-month process to get a CDL. To be able to get a license to drive the Minitor is probably about a third of that. And so now, if we can have that Minitor, we could take our van drivers, rather than having to wait, you know, four months for them to go through that, we can get those van drivers trained, pass the driver test, be able to drive the Minitor. The other thing that helps with this is that they're, as I said, they're 14 passengers. A, they're safer, B, they're yellow, C, they have flashers, and then D is that if we ever have bus runs that are canceled, if we have two Minitores that van drivers could drive, rather than canceling bus runs or trying to shuffle 25 kids in 25 different buses, we can say, we're going to send the two Minitores, we're going to take, you know, 28 kids off those buses, put them on the Minitores, and then we can have two separate runs. And so we're trying to be able to adjust. Because of that, we are not putting in money for a school bus for next year, if we're going to put the money for the Minitor in instead. There's kind of a picture of the Minitor. Everybody see it. It's nice and small. So superintendent's recommendation, continue with our real-time student remediation. We have got to have programs in place that when a student struggles, that they get help immediately. We need to make sure that those kids are getting what they need and remediating where they are. You know, the responsive classroom model at our elementary school has been a game changer for us in making sure that our staff is for us, and making sure that our staff is trained in that and continuing that is really important. A trauma-informed practice, you know, that really is becoming more of an issue, where, you know, students come to us with certificate trauma, and we have to be able to help those students where they're at. Continue our relationship with Sweetser. So Sweetser is an interesting thing, remind you that Sweetser has no affiliation to the school district, but we do have a partnership, and so we provide them a space and a phone, and then they're able to see our students throughout the day at their own cost, not at our cost. So it's really mutually, again, mutually beneficial relationship between both groups. We've made some significant changes around our substance abuse, and particularly how we manage students who have issues with substance abuse. I think there was a time when, you know, the idea was if a student, you know, made a mistake, and let's just say they was caught with alcohol, the giving of a 10-day suspension was going to all of a sudden cure them of any problems that they might have, particularly around substance abuse. And so we've changed that a little bit, and so now we've created a three-meeting model, where our counselors are meeting with students, really processing what occurred with them, you know, if they need help, to be able to give them the support that they need, getting them back in the classroom as quickly as we possibly can, because it doesn't want to cost them their education. And then if it continues to happen, we do have a program called the CERT program, the students could go to in lieu of being suspended for up to 10 days. We can't talk about we want kids to achieve and then say the answer for everything is not having them in school. Kids have got to be in school. We're shorter practices, you know, really working, you know, with our staff and our administrators, our shorter practices. And then implementation of the BAR program at Marshwood Middle School, Marshwood High Resources and fiscal responsibility. We do have a small increase in superintendent's supplies, it's about $4,200. Property and casualty insurance, we don't know what that's going to be right now, but we have had two or three significant things. We had the pipe breakdown here that was a significant cost, and going back, I think three years ago, we had the mold issue at Marshwood Middle School, so that was about a $300,000 cost for the insurance covered that. So I know that question came up last year at the district budget meeting, don't we have insurance? We do have insurance, but now that the insurance cost is going up. We're guessing, you know, we put a number in there, we put a 20% increase, they told us it could be anywhere from 12% to 15%, I just don't know where it's going to be right now. Once we get more information, we'll be able to solidify those numbers. We have eliminated the district's communication director, that position has been eliminated. Those responsibilities are going to be taken care of by the administrative assistant, who's at the front office, Teri Leach, who does a great job for us. She's also one who helps put the newsletters out. And we have a dual responsibility to the citizens of South Berwick and Elliott to provide high-quality education to the residents of our district while maintaining fiscal responsibility, trying to balance those two things. There's a lot of lines here. The dotted line is the state average, and I showed this, you know, last year with last year's data, so now this is going to include not this current year's data, so we're always one, kind of one year behind, so this, what it's showing, this is showing now, excuse me, is last year's data, last year, I showed you the year before's data. So you can look here, all these lines are your SRTC sending schools, so Kennebunk, Kidery, Marshwood, Massabesic, Noble, Stanford, Wells, York, SRTC average, and then the state average. So when you look at Marshwood, you know, we are definitely in the middle when it comes to cost per student allocation, but we are significantly below the state average. If the state average is here, we are significantly below that. So what does that mean? Like, why is that important? A, it's important to this, is that that state average is based on every school in the state of Maine, and so we have, you know, you have to understand that the cost of living, as you know, everybody here knows, is that in York County and Commonwealth County significantly more, and so for us to be there, taking that into account is really, really important, and I think it's impressive. I worry, we want to make sure we balance this with making sure kids get what they need, and that is, you, both of those things have to occur. And so as you can see, you know, York is significantly more, Kidery significantly more, Kennebunk significantly more, I think this is Noble, who is this one? Wells. So basically, a lot of your beach towns, you know, we're here, and then we have, you know, Noble, Massabesic, and Stanford. Those are real numbers that are available on the state website. I'm just trying to present facts. Here's factual information, go to the state website, check the facts, the facts. Where are we next year? Projected enrollment is going to be down about .19%. Total budget, we're talking about a 3.06% increase. The projected tax increase is 2.99%. The difference why this number is bigger than this number is that we were able to create other revenue streams to increase our revenue, and so that's why those numbers are different, so 2.99% projected tax increase. Capital improvements? This is not one of our doors, but we just have a picture of a door. So we need to fix the doors here at the high school, and the Marshwood Middle School, and Elliott Elementary School. They are in tough shape, they haven't been replaced, they need to be taken care of. That creates a security issue, so we want to get those fixed. We want to continue redoing the classroom floors at Elliott, excuse me, at Central We want to have a lease purchase to purchase an outdoor lift. This is just a wise investment, so for example, we need to seal all of our buildings, so we have to go and make sure the bricks are sealed, so we don't have an issue with that. For us to rent a lift for one year, I think it came up to about $45,000 to rent that for three weeks? Yeah, about $45,000 to rent that, and so if we can lease purchase that and pay for it over five years, that will be a savings for us, and we can also get the work done. And then there's the little things in between that need to be taken care of, whether it's, you know, you know, if something needs to be painted, if we need to take the banners off of our lights, if you have to replace light bulbs, all those things, having that lift is going to be important for us, so I would recommend that we strongly consider doing that. We have to finish the windows project at Marshwood Great Works School, and we put that off for a year to try to, again, try to be as wise as we can, we need to do that project now. And there's the Minitor. And then repaid the lower parking lot at Marshwood High School, that's about a $90,000 piece. I just want to do share with you that I asked Todd to reach out to Libby Scott, who's given us the best quote, and they have assured us that that price is locked in for now. I'm concerned, because of that being petroleum-based product, what would happen if, you know, with tariffs and everything else with the cost of energy, so like, that's a good thing that we're able to get assured that that will be the cost. Capital improvement plan. Continue to strive towards sustainability with cost-effective manner. You know, at least, you know, this is next year, at least one school bus. The ceiling I just talked about, roof repairs at the middle school, I mean, that's a constant cycle that we have to go through repairing our roofs. Replace metal door entries at Central School, and then parking lot review, so we, you know, we put a lot of money into parking lots over the last seven years, I think now we need to kind of go back and see where we're at. It would be great if we could just start to take care of those, so that we get longer life out of them, that would be the goal. 2026-27, continued, looking at, potentially have two new school bus leases, continue the ceiling, the parking lot, roof repairs at Central School now, we need to go at the metal doors at Marshwood Great Works School, exterior fencing at Marshwood Middle School is in tough shape, and then we have windows at Marshwood Middle School that we need to start to replace, so we're just trying to get on a cycle of being able to take care of those things. Continue to strive towards sustainability, you know, a lot of these are very similar, those are things that are ongoing. The downstairs bathroom at Marshwood Great Works School needs an overhaul, that's something that we'd like to be able to take care of, you know, obviously, the 26, 27 years is kind of our plan. We have the windows at Elliott Elementary School. The gym floor at Marshwood Middle School is on its last legs, I think we can get one more sanding out of it, that's going to be an issue. That's not, there's no easy way to do that, and so we don't even have numbers on that yet, so we, this has been something that if you see the list, it kind of just keeps getting pushed back because the cost is just so much. The problem is, is that's right on concrete, and so if you pull up that floor, you're going to have to do something, because you're going to create a lip within the gymnasium where it's a tripping hazard, so, you know, we're not there right now, but just, it is on the list. I know if there's one project that I hear a lot about is the middle school gymnasium Again, here's the big deal, is a leach field an overboard discharge, and so we're right now on a 10-year plan to be able to use that overboard discharge. If that fails, we have to come up with a solution, and how do we fix that? The reality is, is where that is, that, there is waste, there's water that goes into Sturgeon Creek, and that's why, that's where it's the overboard discharge. If that fails, we may be required to shut that down, and then we're going to have to come up with some other solutions on how to manage that. Obviously, that's not what we want, we want to try to be able to maintain it as best we can, but it is old, and I think there's only one or two overboard discharge permits left in the state, meaning we happen to be one of them. And so that's something that we are going to have to eventually address. Now, I have talked to the person who's done this, you know, who kind of helps guide us, and they keep saying, just plug into the Elliott sewer, like, that's not an option, like, that's, you know, about, I think it's a quarter of a mile, half a mile to the, yeah, and then we'd also have to create a pump house, it's just that's not economically feasible. And so we would have to figure something else out, whether it's creating a new leach field, whether it's just we go with the Vruta storage tanks and have to have those pumped, which is very costly, and so we're just going to have to be able to manage that as it comes. But we do need to have some flexibility, because, you know, this could go, and we just need to be ready. The exterior doors, then we'll start the window project at Central School all over again, if they need it. Programmatic improvements, kind of the short term and long term. You know, so we've changed graduation requirements to allow more flexibility for multiple pathways. What we didn't want to have happen is that students who, if they make a mistake in their freshman or sophomore year, and then all of a sudden they go to course enrollment, and you say, you know, you can't do this, because if you do, you can't graduate. That's not what we want to do, so we created some flexibility within that, still holding a standard, but at the same time, making sure that students, you know, if they do misstep, that their support is there, so they can be successful, but it also doesn't create lifelong decisions for them, that, you know, that shouldn't happen to any student. Sustainability, we want to continue to work on our community partnerships, maintain a robust extracurricular programming, you know, the more inclusive model of special education, the data is startling. You know, years ago, it might have been that if you were in special education, that, you know, you needed to go to the resource room and get kind of that smaller instruction. Data on that does not support that that's the best thing for children, that, you know, those are students who are two years behind a grader, you know, we need to have students in the regular education classroom getting that exposure to our best teachers, to our, you know, to the most robust content that we have, giving them the support that they need to be successful. And we'll continue to look at safety, you know, expand intervention opportunities, the ELO programming, and so that is a growing area in the state of Maine, where we have an opportunity for students, if they have a passion for a particular thing, as Rob Scully is coming to present it to the board, to be able to make access to that. We've done some great work with our health curriculum, and then achievement data to guide our practices and for our classroom instruction. Long term, you know, use student voice to build opportunities that meet the main learn results, you know, but needs to remain compelling to students, remove systemic barriers, that's something we're trying to talk about a lot. Implement full-day pre-K, and this has been something that's kind of come up a lot, and I just think, you know, there's just a lot of information out there, and so why can't we do it today? First of all, the cost of it would be about $650,000, and so that's an incredible use of assets right now, that's part of the issue. And so we just said basically, let's put that on the back burner for right now, but let's kind of look at what we're doing currently, can we do something better than what we're doing now, can we make some enhancements, so we're looking at that. Here's really the bigger issue. We are required by law to have this three- and four-year-old program, I think you've heard me say that five times now, right? But I just don't know, when we went from 36 students, and now we're at 70, I don't know how space is going to be to be able to house all of this, because basically, what you would be doing with our pre-K students is you'd be creating now four other pre-K classrooms at Central School, you know, two other pre-K classrooms at Elliott Elementary School, there's a space issue. You know, Elliott, we're fine, we have plenty of space at Elliott Elementary School, but there's two variables that are going on right now, and so we did apply for a grant from the state that would have cut that down significantly, that could have been a bridge for us to be able to get there, and we did not get that grant, and so we had that conversation probably in December or January, but I just want to kind of go back to that, because I have got a number of questions that people are, are we doing it or not? That is not included in my budget, just so everyone's aware. We need to continue to work on our program of studies, and we need to review, support, and enhance our hallmark experiences in each building, and then we, again, you've heard me say it, but we're going to use data to inform our instruction in our programs, what do students want? And so one of the things that the board does is you give, you know, each principal a small amount of money, I think it's like 10 points, to be able to say, students, if you're interested, you know, you have an opportunity to go to the principal and say, you know what, Mr. Burnout, I would love to have a Pokemon club, that would be something I'd really be interested in. And if that Pokemon club is what gets kids to go to school every day, that's a great thing, and so now, you know, we have kids doing Pokemon club, we have kids doing Dungeons and Dragons, you know, we have different opportunities that maybe we wouldn't have taken advantage of when we were in school, but kids may want right now. Whatever that is, for kids to come to school, like, that's the important part, right? Whatever that draw is, we want kids in school every single day. So Aaron, you had a great question, I wanted to cover your question, like, what does this 55% mean? So the governor says, we, you know, we fund budget, excuse me, fund schools at 55%. What does it mean? Nearly all schools spend more than the state's allocation, like, that's the ED279, they create a number that they created, you know, they take data, and then they kind of back into this formula around what schools should get with their formula. So they fund 55% is the average for all schools in the state of Maine. It's not every school is funded at 55%, but that is the average. Maine UE funds it 55%, but also controls the formula, so you can say, you know, we're going to, you know, put a teacher in at this cost, even though the state law says the teacher's cost needs to be $50,000, we're going to put it at $48,000, I'm just giving an example of how that could be. So they can change the variables in the formula every year to ensure that they meet 55%. Like, that's a formula, it's not a set formula, that is tinkered with every year, small changes in that formula make significant impacts on local communities, facts. Some districts in the state of Maine receive more than 55%. Lewiston receives far more than 55%, and some receive less. York receives way less than 55%, but that's where the average comes from. Here we go into the weeds, so just bear with me, there's a lot of information here. So this is the back page of the ED279 from Marshwood. And so I just want to highlight, right here, state share, 52.04%, so as you can see, that is not at 55%, so we do not receive 55% funding from the state of Maine. If funded fully, 55% using the state's EPS calculation, it would be a difference of about $830,000, which would go to the community, so that's a lot of money when you start calculating that, so we are not at 55%. I'm going to go to Lewiston. Lewiston is at 80%. So if funded at 55%, their taxpayers would need to raise an additional $23 million. So that $23 million difference between their 55% and the 80% they're getting, that's coming from someplace, and that's coming from every other district in the state of Maine that is not funded at 55%. Now, I'm not saying people agree with it or disagree, these are factual things. So 55%, yes, on the average, that does make sense, but it's not necessarily what you are sometimes, when you associate that, that's not necessarily what it means. Changes in subsidy. So FY '25, total of the $37 million. '26 is $38,864,582. Change in revenue, you'll see the revenues going down slightly. Part of that is because we took that money out from the revenue that was used to offset CDS, we moved that to its own separate account, I know I've said it a few times, but I just want to keep going back, when people see those things, I want them to understand where that comes from. So the change? So why is there such a large difference between Elliott's contribution and South Berwick's So the large difference between the two communities is solely based on the property value growth in South Berwick versus Elliott over the last several years. Valuations are 100% determined by municipality, so don't confuse valuations with assessment, those are different things, the evaluations. And so if you look at the average, the three-year average in Elliott, for the state valuation was, you know, just short of $1 billion, $918 million. South Berwick's three-year average was $678 million, roughly, just to keep it simple. So there's about a $300,000 difference, a $250,000 difference in there. 2025 ED279, this is right on the state website, Elliott's three-year average, okay, five-year growth is 24.46%, but it was, you know, $1.1 billion. South Berwick's three-year average, state valuation, $867 million. Five-year growth, 24%, five-year growth for South Berwick, 27%. So you're starting to see that the South Berwick's growing at a faster rate than Elliott. And so when you go back to that formula, part of that formula was based on the fact that Elliott's valuation was so much more, that was balanced off with the students. And so now that difference between the two communities is shrinking. If you look at the 2026 ED279, Elliott's three-year state valuation is like $1.2 billion, which is an increase of 6.9%, South Berwick's three-year state evaluation is just shy, it was $980 million, it's an increase of 13.1%. Again, available right on the state website, these are the numbers. If you look at Elliott, this is billion, just so you know, remember, I was talking about three-year average, so when we, you know, it was $1.1 billion in 2022, and then we had the average before that. So over a three-year average, not including the last year, would be about, an increase of about $204 million, excuse me, $204 million, and it would be an 18.61% increase to the valuation in Elliott. Three-year average, or three-year increase, pardon me. South Berwick, there's a 32.9% increase in that same three-year period. So you can see the difference. So that adversely impacts South Berwick. These are the numbers, this will all be available online, and we start talking about the perp pupil expenditures. So again, go back to 2007, these numbers all now get applied to that formula. So this is the allocation distribution for each community. That is not clear at all. About $13.8 million, sorry. Oh, there we go, that was better. Municipal allocation with valuation versus the mill expectation. And so the mill rate changing impacts everything, and so that, you know, 6.1 mill rate adversely impacts some communities more than others. And so typically, when we've had this formula, there is years when it's like 45% for South Berwick and, you know, 55% for Elliott, or vice versa, just depending on how the mill rate was being used. So there's a reduction in Elliott of about $113,000. There's an increase of about $237,000, just in the required portions of that by the state's use of the formula. So I just think it's important to go back, and I got some feedback last year that we are not necessarily as transparent as we need to be, so I'm trying to give a lot of information here to give people an idea of what we're talking about. So this really isn't just about, hey, guess what, there's a 2.99% increase that we're asking for. It's far beyond that. I want people to try to understand the process and also understand where do the numbers come from? What variables can I control? What variables can the board control? MSAD 35 control? How much money we spend, right? So that's the 2.99% local tax increase on the two communities. That's a variable that the school board has the ability to control. Things that we can't control. The state required minimum rate is set by the state of Maine, we have no control over that. And as I said, that, you know, that 6.1 mill rate requirement impacts every district slightly differently. But that's something that the state sets, when they play with that mill rate, it impacts other communities less or more. State determines the calculation for 55%, so what does that number mean? And so I'm going to give you an example. Years ago, Maine teachers' retirement was covered 100% by the state of Maine. That was, you know, this is way back in time, probably 10 years ago. That changed, and all of a sudden, you know, school districts were funding, maybe at that time it was 3%, and it's up over on 4% right now. But that 4% cost was put onto the districts within that EPS formula, without necessarily increasing the subsidies. So they put more money that we had to pay out of that in that 55%. Unfunded mandates, you know, the Maine paid family leave, you know, the additional $120,000, that's not anywhere in the formula, that's just the legislature saying, you know, you must do that, that there's no questions of whether you want to, whether you not want to. New Hampshire has a similar law. And people can sign in and say, like, if they can opt into the program or opt out, that's up to individual citizens. In Maine, that's not the way it works. You are required to do this. There are many people who really take that as a one, you know, as a half a percent tax that's coming out of the paycheck every month, or every paycheck, pardon me. And then the cost sharing between South Berwick and Elliott. The two towns changed the state's calculation, which is 100% based on property values, we're going to kind of go, you get, everyone gets the point. So we go back, 3.06, 2.9% projected tax increase to the community. What are we most proud of? Things to celebrate? Creating an environment where students can grow and learn as learners. Continue to use the strategic plan to guide our decision-making. What are the values that the district has? Let's come back to those values. Like, when things are hard, we have to come back to what's important, and we create those things, and what's important when we have clear heads and clear minds, then when things happen, we have already established those priorities. Open and honest, transparent communication with problem-solving was used throughout our budget process. Here's the information, you know, and there's ways that we're going to try to be able to make some changes with the budget presentation this year, to be able to make it a little bit more accessible to people, but really trying to be as open and as transparent as we can be. Collaborative decision-making, you know, we meet with our principals, starting really in October, about what do you need, what do your students need, what does the data tell us that your students need? What does our enrollment look like? We're trying to balance programmatic improvements versus fiscal responsibility. We're always in that, you know, like making sure that we'd be able to balance those two We want to continue to talk about education in innovative ways, the ELO programming, partnership with Course of Naval Shipyard, those are all examples of things where we're trying to really get student voice into innovation into the classroom. Just some facts. Fiscal climate for the past three years, it has been an interesting three years. Using the past three social security cost of living adjustments, 8.7% increase, 3.2% increase, 2.5 overall increase for an increase of about 14.4%. Our past three budget increases have been 11.5%. This is an anomaly. We have always been in that 2.5 to 3.5 range. The goal had always been to be at 2.5%. You know, that was something that we tried to hold ourselves to as much as we can. State subsidy got a little bit off, but we've tried to sit it right around that 3% number. And so last year was difficult. You know, we knew it was going to be because it was just, there was economic situation where kind of that fallout from this, and believe me, this, all this information is used by everybody. Businesses look at that, you know, they say, look, you know, what did that cost at goods and services, what's the cost for employees? Those are all factors that we have to be aware of. Potential issues on the horizon. I don't know what's going to happen between, the impasse right now between the state of Maine and the federal government. You know, President Trump has said that if you don't comply with what his demands are, that we're going to lose federal funding, I think that's going to be settled in the courts. You know, in the meantime, we're in the middle of a budget process, and we're not really sure where to go. So we, you know, I'm presenting you the budget, that is assuming that we're going to have that money. Obviously, we have to build contingency plans in case we lose that money, but that's just a reality of, and so a question comes up is like, if there's any money in the budget you can't cut, it's that $867,000, because that's your IDA, that's your special education money, that's the money that by legal guidance, by law, you're required to do because an IP says you have to do that. And so like, that money's going to stay, that money's going to be spent regardless, and so we're going to have to look at cuts in other places if that were to come to that. Hope it doesn't, we're not going to, you know, think about that tonight, but I just want to put it on the horizon, because I just don't know the answers to it right now. Any potential changes the Maine legislation requires could create unfunded mandates. So anytime that you change the minimum salaries for teachers, you know, so the state of Maine says, you know, you have to pay a minimum of this amount, that impacts things. Particularly with educational technicians, you know, and so last year, I think it was a 1.25 over minimum wage for educational technicians, and so that, you know, that obviously impacted where we, by law, we had to raise our amounts that we're paying our educational technicians, and believe me, they earned every dollar of that, hard-working people. Don't know what to make of this right now. Legislation is currently on the table, discussing whether or not to pay teachers overtime in excess of 40 hours a week. That's, I don't know what that would look like. You know, there's some pretty clear laws in the, that used to say if you are a salaried employee and you made over a certain amount, you would not be eligible for overtime. So there's two things going on, there is a push to be able to increase that amount, or excuse me, decrease that amount, to make more people eligible for overtime, and at the same time make teachers eligible for overtime. It may be the situation where some staff would be, some staff wouldn't be. I don't know if that, if it's going to pass, but it's something that when I see that, that could have an immediate budget implication for everybody. CDL drivers, I feel like, I've been superintendent for six years, and I feel like we talk about it every year, like this is just an ongoing, ongoing issue, and so we're continuing to work on this. And this one, it may have some resolution to it, but potential legislation that may require all high schools in Maine to begin after 8:30. And so that's a, that's a big deal. And so like, on paper, you can say, well, that makes sense, you know, high school kids want to sleep later, you know, I understand, you know, you could talk about the science of that. This is a huge, huge impact on this school district. And so, like, why? So one of the reasons why would be that all of a sudden, we're now going to have, you know, five, six, seven-year-olds out at 6:30 in the morning, waiting on the side of the road for the bus to come. Like, that, that makes me nervous, and this is my own bias, that makes me, that concerns me. That's going to change things for families a little bit, could help, could hurt, I don't know. It would be a budgetary impact, because, you know, we would probably have to run another, another tier of our busing system, depending on what happens with our SRTC school in Sanford, we may have to add a third run. We run a two-run system, high school, middle school first, elementary school second, and so that, depending on how things work, we may need to run an additional run, which, go back to this, if we don't have enough drivers as it is right now, that just creates another strain on everything. And so I know there's a lot of feelings on this. We, as a district, had this conversation six years ago, you know, there's strong feelings on either side of it, but this, if this does happen, there is an implication of this. My sense is right now that they're putting aside some money for school districts who want to be able to do this, and so that might be the resolutions, they may move away from mandating it for everybody, excuse me, to be able to, people can study it. The problem is, is if you're going to do it, everybody has to do it. I mean, this is, you know, I'm always hesitant to say this, but it's a reality. By doing this, if we stayed on our schedule, or we went to a 7:30 schedule, and we got out of school, that we kept a seven-hour school day, we would get out at 3:30. Those kids traveling for, you know, for fall athletic contests, you know, that all of a sudden light becomes an issue. And so now the game starts at 5 o'clock, you know, we're an hour away from most of our opponents, and again, I don't, athletics doesn't run the world, but I'm just telling it, like, that's a factor that impacts our students, and I just think those things we have to talk about as we kind of go forward, so. I don't think I've ever talked that much in my life. Board, do you have any questions?
Your voice is holding up.
I've been home, had the flu, so I'm doing the best I can to get through it, so. Any questions from the board? We'll give you your budget binders. So our next steps in the process is that we have budget workshops, and that's part of my report that we'll talk about. We had to cancel the first meeting in March. Our budget workshops, we're going to add a little bit of length to them, so rather than going from 5:30 to 7:00, we're going to go from 5:00 to 7:00. We'll add, you know, probably each one of the cost centers around to be able to do that. So you'll have the first meeting in April, the second meeting in April, then the 30th meeting in April, that would be your opportunity to be able to finalize what budget you're going to take forward to the taxpayers for the district budget meeting. Okay?
Great job. Thank you so much.
Awesome. I think I just did number two. Budget timeline. I think this is the great thing, number three on my agenda is the Elliott Police Department use of Marshwood Middle School. And so over April vacation, they've asked if they could come in and do trainings at Marshwood Middle School to deal with crisis response, and obviously, some things that we never want to talk about, but when, you know, our partners want to come in and do a better job for our students, we obviously want to work with them, so I think it's a real positive, and so that's going to be kind of that, Southern Maine Crisis Response Team will come in and use Marshwood Middle School. So the last time this happened, the word didn't get out, and then people were like, oh my gosh, there's like a tank in the front yard of the middle school, so we want to make sure we communicate that ahead of time with the community, because Facebook was lit up like a Christmas tree.
That will be during the vacation week.
Yeah, it will be during vacation, because it's the Tuesday of vacation. Again, you know, one of the things that we've really worked hard on is trying to create better communications with our community, is one of the initiatives that I really have taken kind of as a personal goal, and I found two great partners to do this with, is really trying to create a Marshwood Alumni Association, so we can bring alumni back in a way where we have all the classes together and see what they want that to look like. And so we have our first meeting tomorrow. And so we have, we put out a mailing. Denise Brooks and Mike Zemarki have done a fantastic job, both Marshwood graduates, trying to reach out, going through the yearbooks, and who do we reach out to, how do we contact people through Facebook and what have you? We'll have our first meeting to kind of talk about it, so any Marshwood graduates, please attend, it's kind of an open opportunity, but I think the idea is like, we want to welcome our alumni back into our district and have them feel more of a part of what we're doing right now. So I think we had great success with the Hall of Fame that we did in the fall with that, and so I think this is just the next step in that process. And then tonight, you're going to be voting on the Special Services Agreement. I know that we've talked about that with a workshop with Rollin Street, but again, you know, this is something that's mutually beneficial, this creates revenue for our budget, it also is going to help our CDS students, because part of that's going to be funded by CDS, but you will have a vote on that this evening. Number six, just sad, you know, Lori McPherson is just a wonderful, wonderful person, you know, such a good teacher, a member of the Maine Athletic Hall of Fame, State Hall of Fame as the cheerleading person, was the first person to be recognized for cheerleading in the state of Maine in the Hall of Fame, but she's retiring, I want to wish Lori, you know, the best, she is wonderful. And again, her roommate or dorm mate, right next order, Lori Gerard, is retiring as well, Lori's, you know, been a fantastic teacher at the Great Works School. Two real cultural icons within that building, and, you know, those are tough positions to replace, and we're just thankful for both of them being in our children's lives. And that will be at the end of the school year. And then we did have a resignation of Taylor Hadra, who is a kindergarten teacher at Elliott Elementary School, and so Taylor is no longer with us, she has resigned, she had another opportunity which she couldn't turn down, and so sometimes life happens, and so we just want to wish Taylor the best. Student reports.
I'll go first. We have our sports section. So Marshwood Sprinter Andre Clark won the 55 meter at the New England Indoor Track Championship, and will progress to compete in the New Balance Indoor Nationals. Saraterio won the Sea Coast Basketball Player of the Year. Boys Ski Team won the Maine Principals Association Good Sportsmanship Award. The Boys Volleyball had a game tonight against Falmouth, and will go this weekend for a full-day tournament hosted at Falmouth. For the Wrestling Team, Cody Boubier and Kylan Berry came first in states. Jack Anderson and Jacob, sorry if I don't pronounce his last name right, Bren Giloney, maybe? Took second place. Rogan Bouver, Savannah Chapman, and Kelsey Strong each came in third place. At New England's meet, Kylan Berry came in second place, and Kelsey Strong came in third. A little bit on what's happening at Student Gov lately, Student Government has opened up applications for next year's Junior School Board Rep. We're also starting discussions around next year's Junior President. Committees are still looking good, they're looking at some last projects and initiatives for the year.
Our One Act Play, Citizens United, moved on to states, and they're going to perform their showcase for a chance to win the state title, which is super excellent. The Spring Musical, Pippin, had a dream roll cabaret this past Friday. The cast got to sing some of their favorite songs from musical theater, and tickets for the musical are currently on sale for the show dates starting toward the end of March. And then math team has its state meet on April 1st coming up. Civil Rights Team is excited to welcome some visitors from Tuskegee sometime in the future. Once a date has been set, they're hoping to schedule sort of open mic night talent show to do a bit of cultural exchange. And then the Hawk Buddies program ended earlier this month for the elementary level schools, and buddies were really sad to say goodbye, but they're super happy to work together. And then for student life, a group of sophomores and juniors took a trip to the Portland area to tour USM and SMCC with some of our school counseling department yesterday. And then some students in our career technical programs at Sanford participated in Skills USA, which is a competition with technical centers in Maine, and these competitions included knowledge bowls, skill tests, and showcases. And that's all we have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents, I don't know that we had anything to report on this past couple of weeks, so we'll move right into the report of the committees. Have to find it, there it is. First up is the Finance and Facilities Committee, which met earlier this evening, we had a pretty busy meeting. We did have a yogurt tasting, which was quite awesome. We're looking at replacing the current offerings, in part because the, we need to make sure that the bulk containers are still available for making parfaits, as well as the four-ounce cups, and we gave them some direction in terms of what they should do next around taste testing, so that's moving forward, that was good. In terms of the numbers, the expenditures, revenues very close to each other, general cash balance at the end of the month was 1.79 million, which is where we want it to be, it was in the green. We're, in terms of percent of revenue and expenditure targets, we're in a good place with that. What else do I want to say? Just quickly have a look at these. Adult Education is actually doing well, we're in the positive, and we do have one more payment coming in from Kindery in March, but we're on the glide slope toward that spending down to zero, which is where it does every year, which is good. Food Service Financial Statements, we got the statements for both January and February, and that's continuing to improve. We're still load some intergovernmental revenue on the numbers in February, but it's showing a current year-to-date of $34,000 to the negative, and that will come up over the next month or two. to the negative, and that will come up over the next month or two. Federal Grants, we didn't get any new income in from the federal grants, but we're still running ahead. Thank you to the folks working in our central office who have been diligent in getting those grant money submitted. So that's pretty much what we learned on the numbers. We're still in very good shape against our, our annual budget for this year. Facility Update, the, the electricity line into Gray Works School was fixed over the February break, so that's finally been dealt with. We, we talked in a previous meeting about a power surge from that faulty line that, that damaged the lights in the building, and that's been taken care of. But the power loss in February, the gym floor was, there was a heater that, that had a pipe that melted or burst or whatever. So there was water damage to the gym floor, and we've filed an insurance claim with CMP on that. It looks like about half of the floor is going to have to be replaced. To fix it correctly, it's going to be on the order of 90K. So stay tuned on that. We've submitted a claim to CMP. And if, if they come through on that, good. And if they don't, then I think the next step is to submit to our own insurance. There's been a generator, I would say augmentation at middle school, so that we've added the main office to, to the, the current generator supplies heat and water to the building. For additional 2K, we were able to add the ability to power the main office, which means that communications would be available to the school, since the cell phone service there is terrible. So internet and phone will now be available in the main office when there's a power interruption, and that, that's important. Transportation, Mr. Gavely talked about the mini-tower, mini-tour vans. I think we have a lease purchase agreement for one of those on our agenda for later today. Staffing continues to be an issue, as was pointed out in transportation. We've, we lost a driver last month. We're losing a vocational driver, vocational run driver this month. And we've got two drivers out on medical leave. But we do have people coming along in the training process, and hopefully we'll get that back to full strength shortly. One last concern is propane pricing with the switch in the ownership of the company, and also the concern about potential tariff impact on energy costs. We just don't know yet, and we haven't been able to lock the pricing yet. So I'm keeping a very close eye on that. So that's the FNF report. Ed Policy Met on 2/26. I don't know that we've had a report out from that yet, or have we?
We have not.
Yeah. Does anybody have anything?
I can do it.
Go ahead, please.
We have some first reads, which we can get to. And I just wanted to say, at the beginning of the meeting, we just briefly touched on AI, which I know is something that we've discussed here. And we're sort of in the gathering information phase. There's a committee at the high school that's coming together and reaching out, just sort of getting some information together. And then we'll revisit as far as a policy, if there is one to come.
Great. Thank you. Wellness SEO, next meeting is April 2nd. We haven't had a meeting since the last time it was reported on, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, next meeting is April 2nd.
We're going to have to figure that out, because we're going to be starting at 5:00 for the budget workshop. So I think, let me talk to, Mr. Brennan, talk to De'Aaron, and we'll come up with a solution.
Very good. Okay, that concludes the report of the committees and brings us to new business. This first one, may I have a motion, please, with regard to the special services agreement with Rollinsford?
I move to approve the special services agreement between MSAD 35 and the Rollinsford School District.
Second, Rebecca.
Rebecca, thank you. We've discussed this in previous meetings.
Yes. It's a two-year agreement. You know, we felt like doing it for the first year, we wouldn't necessarily know the strengths and weaknesses of that. And so we, we agreed to do a two-year agreement, where that would be having someone in the Rollinsford Building and then sharing a position, as we said in the budget presentation, with the CDS to have a split position.
Yes, and a copy of that agreement is in your packets.
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? All in favor? That's 4-0. Okay, very good. Thank you. We have some first reads, as you said. We have a motion, please, with regard to the first read of IK.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy IK, evaluation of student achievement.
Second, Rebecca.
Rebecca, thank you. Okay. Little bit of language changes. Is this, this is our current policy? Or we're not replacing it with?
Yes, we just reviewed it, and just that changed.
It's time for its period. I could use small language.
Just a very small change.
Yeah. Any comments or questions about that? All in favor? That's 4-0. And we'll see that again in two weeks. Motion, please, with regard to the first read on IK.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy IK, emotion retention and acceleration of students.
Second, Jen.
Jen, okay. This one has some substantial changes, do you know?
Very much so.
Yeah.
So, big idea is that we want to make sure this is a transparent process, that we're communicating with families on a regular basis. You know, and then we, we took some of the language out of the MSMA policy that we liked, took some of our language that we liked, and added it all together. I think it is important to talk about, though, is that, you know, I think the committee had a robust conversation about statistical data would say that retention is not a highly effective use of a, of an intervention, I would say. You know, obviously, when we're talking about someone in kindergarten or pre-K who might be young, like, that's very, very different than being at the middle school. And I think the middle school really becomes the area where it's most impacted. At the high school, everything's is credit-based, so that necessarily takes care of itself. But really just talked about wanting to create as many things as we can do. And so the implementation of the, of an online program this summer to be able to help those students who might find themselves in that situation, to give some choices to families in lieu of doing that, so.
Great. One thing to possibly note for the next read, under A criteria, it looks like there's a list of 11 things, but the 11th one is blank.
But that was for you to fill in. If you had an extra one, you were going to throw in.
Choice, choice.
We'll address that for that.
Yes, thank you. We'll change that.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All in favor? That's 4-0. Thank you. Motion, please, with regard to the first read on IHBA.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy IHBA, Individualized Education Programs.
I'll second, Lisa.
Lisa, thank you.
We're keeping it. It was just a legal reference.
Just a change in legal reference.
That's correct.
Otherwise, all good.
Yes.
Comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, that's 4-0. Good, thank you. And then, please, a motion on the first read of KCD.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy KCD, Public Gifts, Donations to the Schools.
Second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. Same, no changes other than one of the references, yes?
Correct.
Just a change in legal reference. Comments or questions? All in favor? That's 4-0. Thank you. Motion, please, with regard to the first read on KI.
I move to approve the first reading and discussion of policy KI, Visitors to the Schools.
Second, Jen.
Jen, thank you. Now, this, in this one, we're moving over to the recommended MSMA reference.
That's correct.
Right, so it's like totally different.
Yep.
Any particular comments about?
Our policy really lacks clarity, where this is much more clear. This is, this is the purpose. This is when, where it looks like this is the process.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? All in favor? That's 4-0. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the first reads. May I motion, please, with regard to the approval of a donation of musical instruments?
I move to approve the donation of musical instruments to the Marshwood Music Department on behalf of Michael Natnitz and Ann Hussey.
Second, Rebecca.
Thank you.
And so, family had reached out to Kate Smith, just with this wonderful opportunity, just such a generous offer on behalf of the family, because the Hussey family who brought that forward, so.
So grateful.
That's very nice. Very kind. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'm interested in learning how Mr. Gration's going to work that Middle Eastern-style 11-string oud into the.
And accordion. Awesome.
Comments or questions from the board? All in favor? Good, that's 4-0. And again, thank you to those folks.
Thank you so much.
Very kind. Motion, please, with regard to a overnight trip for the One Act Drama Club.
I move to approve the Marshwood High School One Act Drama Club to take an overnight trip for the State Drama Festival at Camden Hills High School on March 21st and 22nd, 2025.
Second, Rebecca.
Great, thank you.
Can I comment on this?
Please.
This is a wonderful opportunity for our students. But I, I do want to point out, putting this aside for a second, is that we're having to ask more questions about these overnight trips now with regards particularly around transportation. And so we ran into an, an issue around the ski team going away. And so everybody wants to support that because it doesn't make sense for a two-and-a-half-hour drive back and forth to the mountain, you know, over two days. But at the same time, we're not in the place where, where we can have a driver be with that group for, you know, 48 straight hours as they're there. And so we're having to try to ask some difficult questions and try to come up with some solutions around how to support this wonderful opportunity for kids. But at the same time, we can't do that at the sacrifice of not being able to run Bus 11 on, on Monday because we don't have enough drivers. Like, that, that's not an option for us. So we've worked it out, but I just did want to make you aware that that is something that we're having to monitor now. So.
Appreciate that. Comments or questions from the board? All in favor? 4-0. Very good. Thank you. Motion, please, and this one needs to be read as written. This is with regard to a lease purchase of that mini-tour.
I move that the resolution entitled, "Resolution to Authorize Lease Purchase of a New Minibus in the Principal Amount of $103,000, be adopted in form presented to this meeting."
I'll second, Lisa.
Lisa, thank you. So you talked about it in your presentation.
I have mentioned it tonight.
Yes.
Yeah. So I've learned more about driver certification than I think I've ever wanted to. This does, as, as I mentioned, fall under the 15 category. And so it used to be termed as a Series Z certificate that a driver would add, which did not require a CDL. They've changed that name since to a Series 3, instead of calling different people. I think everyone was confused. We finally got a clear answer. We have it in writing. And so there is some training that would be required for these, for these drivers, but is no, nowhere near the expectation of a CDL. I just think this is the way we're going to want to go. And I do think schools across the state of Maine are going to run into the same situation. When we start talking about transporting all of these three- and four-year-olds, in addition to what we normally do, like, this is going to be probably a solution for some districts to be able to, to be able to manage their fleet a little bit better in the future, so.
Comments or questions from the board? All in favor? That's 4-0. Thank you. That concludes our new business and brings us to the Building Administrator Champion. Who wishes to go first?
We've got a lot going on since we've last met. So this week, we have, every year, we have the Maine Agriculture coming in to do a presentation in all our classrooms. And this year, Denise Joy volunteered. Of course, I don't think she really retired because she's almost every day at our school. So she came in with her sister, Debbie White, and they went to every classroom and read a story from the Maine Agriculture Department and talked about gardening and farming, and did a little mini lesson with soils and planted some microgreens. So that was just exciting. They went above and beyond. Just thank you to the PTO. We did have Chris Van Duzen. He had to reschedule with a snow date, but came, and it was just wonderful. We did it all from our three-year-olds to our third graders, and he adapted to his audience for every time. So it was just so exciting. The kids thought there was a rock star in, in the house. So they were just so excited. And it was wonderful to have Chris with us. We also had our Art and Literacy Night a few weeks ago. We had a lot of volunteers. Teachers came and read a similar, a story in each classroom. It was "What If?" And then we had different crafts. And it's just a really nice night where Lisa O'Brien and Brenda Stewart and Pamela Keighley really come together to plan an Art and Literacy Nights. One of the, just watching the parents do art with the kids and all the different stations is wonderful. We also had a book Bingo Night, which was similar, where our parents are playing bingo. I think they just get into it just as much as the kids do. Instead of prizes, they get to bring home buckets of books that we had donated. We had so many books donated, so we filled up, probably donated from families from the other table to the other table to bring home. So lots of books are being recycled, which was wonderful. And then just to, just this week, we have, thank you to Todd and everybody for our new crosswalk and our new fire lane for our parking lot. It just, it's wonderful and just really helpful for all our families and our students. So that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. So Elliott Elementary, we've had a lot of things, and I'm just going on the last couple of months, but I'm going to just highlight a few. Sorry, my voice is not great. Kindergartners just had a family night where they did an ABC fashion show. They decorated baskets and wore them. They had sunglasses. There were lots of poses and red carpet. And they were, they just loved it. So did the families. Parent Program paid for Frog Town puppets to come, and they did a show called "Everyone Loves Pirates." And then the kids got to see it at school, and then were invited back in the evening to bring their families to see it. And a lot of kids loved bringing their younger or older siblings. And our parent program paid for that. Ports of Naval Shipyard spent a day at our school and was set up in the gym and all grade levels, except pre-K, but they're going to have their special day. Participated in STEM, STEM programs with them. What was nice about it was a lot of people that came to volunteer, or parents of children in our building. So it was really nice.
That's neat.
Mrs. Seaget, our physical education teacher, did the Kids Heart Challenge with the children. Great day, lots of fun, lots of activity, volunteers again. One of my favorite things, we did a literacy day with Chris Van Duzen, just like at nine at school. Parent Program paid for that as well. Chris stayed, and we had a family night, and he read a story, "If I Built a School." And then the children are able to go to six different stations and work on STEM activities with that. We had over 200 people ask me to come to that. So that was a really fun night, very busy and lots of families. The first graders, thanks to our parent program, visited the Children's Museum today and yesterday. And this week, there was a lot of leprechaun shenyangans there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good when you can work shenyangans into a presentation, right?
So I get here tonight, I look over, and I, I look at Nina, and I can see she's got some things written down. Then I look at Anne, she's got some things written down. So I say, Anne, we don't have to present tonight, do we? And she goes, I think so. So I'm, so I'm looking at the paper, I'm looking at the agenda, and I see, "All Administrators Present." I usually have an idea what you can do. So I, this is, I did not do my homework. So, but a couple of things that I'm having at the Gray Works, last, I think it was last Tuesday, might have been Monday night, there was the District Band Festival, which is one of my favorite nights. Because what happens is the fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade band members come together along, along with the high school band. So you think of the fifth graders, they come in and, you know, they are just surrounded by all of these great musicians. And it is such a great, it's a great opportunity, one, for them to perform. But the second thing is, and probably even more important, is they see, I stick with band. Look what I'm going to be doing in the sixth grade. Look at that seventh and eighth grade. And then you look at that high school band. And so we, I was just so excited to see that. And I was talking to a parent today, and she was saying that, because at the middle school, you get to kind of pick a lot of different options. And sometimes kids might not pick band. And she said, by seeing, her daughter seeing what was going on at the middle school and the high school, it was like, I am guaranteed that I'm going to pick band. So that was a great thing. Congratulations to all the band, the kids, but also the educators. I went up on a field trip the other day. We went up to the Gulf of Maine Research Institute. Now, every once in a while, I'll go on those field trips. And so I said, I think I'll, I haven't been there in a few years. It is just, the science there is just unbelievable. And you, you go in there, and our kids, I mean, you'd just be so proud of our kiddos. So they go there, and they are, they're giving, here's, here's what's happening in the Gulf of Maine. They're picking up lobsters. They're looking at all different things. They're problem-solving. The technology is just unbelievable. I'm just kind of standing back, just trying not to break anything. And, but it was just, that was all of our fifth graders. Last week, John was there. I know that we had, Kate Potvin did a, a career day. This is the first one we've done in a number of years. And it was, and I think we had like 55 presenters. And so what we did is, we invited all these people to come. And they did it in kind of, there might be like 10 presenters. And so this group here might be something, a, a group of folks that might have been construction. It was, it could have been professional, a group of professional. We had a group of doctors, nurses, things like that. So kids kind of got to choose different areas to go in and listen to these folks. That was really, that was really exciting. And again, I think doing it for the first time, it was like, this went really well. Here's an area we can improve on. But the feedback I got from the kiddos that it was great. And the other thing is just what we're working, one of the things we're working on, not doing too bad, but I do my homework, don't I? The, we're working with the high school and the middle school to be able to bring our fourth graders down to the ropes course. So we have our small ropes course at the, at the Gray Works School. Last year, we have taken them to the Brown Center. But now that we've got the, the ropes course here, we are, and we've got folks trained, so course here, we are, and we've got folks trained, so we're looking at bringing all of our fourth graders down here in the springtime. So that's, that's, um, what's on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
So we've had a lot of thi, we've had a lot of things going on at the middle school, but since we haven't been here in a while, um, a couple of weeks ago was National Social Worker Week and I always want to give a shout out because our social worker and I know throughout the districts, they do an excellent job, they work really, really hard and it was Maintenance Workers Appreciation Day a couple of weeks ago and they, they go above and beyond and they're all over the place and they try to do such a great job. This month is busy, 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 just like November is, well, every month is, but parent teacher conferences are this week or this month, tomorrow's for seventh and eighth graders. Our sixth grade changed our parent conferences this year because in the fall, it's so, it's so interesting because it's a big transition for our kids coming from Great Works and so we did three conference nights in the fall and we're doing by invite only for parents in the, um, now. So, but I want parents to know that it's really important that anytime throughout the school year, you can always call and make an appointment with our, with our teachers. So please do not hesitate to reach out to us at any time throughout the school year. Our book fair is coming up next week and our kids get really excited about that, mostly for the erasers and the toys and they try to get a book here and there. Um, our Alice team, I know John talked about it a lot, um, he touched upon it. We work really hard and our, our Alice team at, at the middle school is just doing a fantastic job and we worked on barricading today, uh, the other day at school and one of our teachers stopped and said, "It was really cool to hear the eighth graders talking about it in the hallway about, 'Oh, we did it this way and, oh, what did you guys talk about?'" So they're talking about it and unfortunately, it's a thing that we have to talk about in our society now, but they were having mature conversations about it and it's just, it's, it's sad, but it's also refreshing that they're taking it seriously. Um, we met, um, on last Thursday, Nina, was it last Thursday, for Hike Through History? So our conversations for that are happening and we're really, really excited to celebrate the birthday of, um, Central School. Um, we've been really busy, our school counselors, um, a shout out to David Gration and Crystal, I can never say, Velamir, am I saying that right? Velamir, see, I'm always off with her name. They have done a great job transitioning our eighth graders to the high school, um, and transitioning how we're, uh, doing our course selections for our students. So our students get to select and choose all their allied arts, they get to choose those, that's their choice at the middle school and we take great pride in that and we're doing it all online now, so the teachers and the staff have been doing a great job, but without those people, none of that would be happening. And, um, James came down and he did a great, he helped out with a couple freshmen, Andrew, Andre Dival, Autumn Baldwin, of, and a few teachers, um, Erin Hember and, is it Bo? Is it go by Bo or Robert? He came down and Lindsay Edson, they are really doing a great job of trying to transition our kids from one school to the next, so we're doing a great job with that. And then, we have our unified basketball team, um, that are, it, it chokes me up because our staff at the middle school, our, uh, phys ed teachers have taken and volunteered their time and they're coaching our unified basketball team and it's not just for, it, those kids are loving it, but it's watching the parents watch their children and then watching the kids that are helping those students. So I invite you all, if you'd like to come, next Thursday around 7:30, we're having a, uh, assembly for all of our, uh, our unified basketball game and we're inviting some of our high school students from last year to come down and watch and observe and also, um, speak and talk to them about what they get to do when they come to the high school for the unified basketball team. Um, and we're really working up really hard, we're having a wellness summit on, um, Friday, May 9th and we're trying to bring in, we have a local organic farmer, yoga, golf, mindfulness, mindfulness, healthy smoothies, um, art and K-9 units and just trying to get a lot of career-based, um, exposure for the students. We're also gonna have a good old field day too, where we're gonna have them doing some tug-of-war potato sack races and obstacle courses, so we're working hard on that as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and we had a seventh grade glow dance and that was. Oh, so good. That was at the top of our last.
Can I just say one thing I would really miss? I just wanted to really give a shout out to Heidi and the team that put together the Professional Development Day on Friday, just an incredible amount of hard work, um, to see the, the staff is engaged and, and the presenters and, you know, just there's some incredible highlights to have, you know, my personal favorite was when a student at